I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. And also, please be advised our city council meeting will broadcast on Comcast channel 99 AT&amp;T U-verse and the City of Gaston YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will not come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Tellman.
Here.
Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
Worthy.
Here.
Back.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Cannon.
Here.
And Reed.
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilman Cannon to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. I must say, seventy-five, Lord, we come to you today, Lord, thanking you for everything you've done for us, you've done for this city, God, and you're gonna do for us, God. We thank you for all the people that's in attendance today, Lord. We ask you to be with this council and this mayor, God, as we try to do the best we can for this city, God. God, we just love you, we thank you, and we praise you for everything. It's for your name and for your sake I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and city council meeting held on May the twenty-fourth.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of May twentieth through the twenty-sixth.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
We have unfinished business and we have an item here. In fact, we have seven ordinances. These are ordinances that are adopting the 2021 edition of the International Building Fuel, Gas, Mechanical, Plumbing, Property Maintenance, Residential, and Swimming Pool and Sparkle. Public hearings were conducted last week and these ordinances were presented for the first reading. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt all seven ordinances.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt all seven ordinances, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
This is a time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property located at 103 Elmwood Avenue in District Two, East Gaston, Church of God being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Anyone like to speak in favor?
Madam President, I'm Brian Harberson with the Builder Department. We filed this case in April of last year. There've been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Brian, has the East Gaston Church of God been involved in the process or communicated at all?
I talked with the pastor in the last few days, their desire is for the city to take it down, so I told him we had to go through this process.
Okay, I just want to make it clear that that was requested by the homeowner, this particular abatement.
What is the pledge of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property located at 2802 Railroad Avenue in District Six, State of Alabama. Possible right of redemptions of Miguel Espina, subject to a mortgage in favor of First Family Financial Service and William Oliver McKenney, being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution?
That's who that is. Madam President, based on permits that have been issued and recent improvements, we're gonna ask that this case be tabled for thirty days. Thank you.
All right, Mr. McKenney, you got your wish on your way up here. How are you today? If you'll just give your name and address.
William Oliver McKenney, 509 Shaw Avenue, Etelle, Alabama. Zip code three five nine five four.
Okay. We know that you were speaking and you wanted to speak in opposition, but Mr. Harberson had just got up and said he was giving you thirty days. So what did you want to say to him?
Now, what does he give me the thirty days for? Because I sold the house.
Yeah, he just said it's like he doesn't own it.
I don't own the house.
Oh, oh, oh.
I sold the house. So I don't know why I keep getting lemons. I sold them pretty.
So you want the mail to stop?
Yeah, stop coming, stop everything. Because I sold it.
Yeah, I think that's why they hired him.
And then they keep sending me all bills about our own tax. I paid the last tax when the guy got the house. My tax was paying for that period of time.
Well, Peter, they sent them.
So I'm too old to keep coming up here.
Peter, they sending them to you because they know you've got plenty of money.
I don't know what to do. So y'all got me clear.
You're good.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right.
And I just want to make clear those tax bills aren't coming from the City of Gaston.
What is the pledge of the council?
I make the motion, we give him thirty days, please. Or give the person that owns the property thirty days.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for thirty days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for thirty days.
Our final public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property located at 514 Wilson Street. This is in District Six. Sandra Lynn Bowman, being the last known owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone speak in favor?
Madam President, this case involves building remains. We filed it in September of last year. There've been no improvements, no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Madam President, I just want to emphasize, these are building remains. This is not a home. This is just the brick foundation of what's left of a home. We're not pushing a home down.
On this piece of property, about three years ago, a house fell on it. It was an empty house. People had just moved out and the house destroyed, a tree destroyed the house. And the owner of the property at that time, we hadn't got all the wood stuff off, most of it, and just left the foundations. That's why we're moving now.
Last item.
We got the bill.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We need a motion. Motion to accept, please.
Now, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next and final resolution authorized agreement with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and this is, and the Kewahco RC and D. This is for a project to remove the low-head dam located at 3916 Brook Avenue with funding provided by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Services in Kewahco. And the approximate amount is $475,000. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Second.
In discussion.
Yes, this is a, the low-head dam there on Pump Station Road. We've had some facilities down there, some people fatalities, some people, you know, lost their lives down there. It's real dangerous. Everybody always says you need to hurry up and do something. Well, this was $475,000, the City of Gaston saved by the proper officials here going with the game, the fishing game about doing this. They're gonna pay $475,000 and our city public works department's gonna do the hauling of the stuff that they put out there. And they're figuring that's probably about $55,480. So it really won't cost us much to do that. And this needed to be done many years ago, but like everything else, this is a time, something that's gonna be in time going on. So they've got one year from today, I think it is, to get this project finished. So it'll be finished in year twenty-three. So just don't think it's gonna happen tomorrow, but it's gonna happen.
Okay. All right. What is the pledge of the council?
We've actually got our motion in our second.
Yeah, we got it done.
Okay.
We're on to new business.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New business.
Yes, Madam President, I do have one item that I'd like to ask for consideration today. It's a resolution authorizing a lease agreement with the Gaston Etowah Industrial Development Authority.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business?
Yes, Madam President, I have one from the City Clerk's conveyance. Property located at 1325 Counsel Avenue to Mr. and Mrs. Gaspar.
Okay.
Now, ask for unanimous consent today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance as an item of new business today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have a unanimous vote to consider today.
Move to adopt, please. Second.
All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any more new business?
Yes, Madam President, I have another conveyance of property located at 1811 Adams Street. I'd ask that we consider this today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous consent for consideration.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Do we have any departments that would like to make any reports? Okay, we have a citizen request, Joseph Cole, concerning gun violence.
I have my crew with me today, so if y'all want to jump on me, I've got some here. Come on. Stand up. Come on. Come on. Come on. Come on. Good morning.
Good morning.
Madam President, with your permission, I'd like to do a moment of silence for the family of the eighteen kids and the two teachers who was killed in Uvalde, Texas, and also for the people who was killed in Buffalo at the store. Thank you. Several weeks ago, I contacted the Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Reddick, and asked him if I could speak to the young males, excuse me, at the middle school and also at the high school about gun violence. And when I went to speak to them, I didn't have anything planned out to say, but I just wanted to talk to them about the dangers of guns and the different things. And I asked them a question, and the question that I asked them, from the answer that flowed me, was how many of the students had actually held a handgun and how many students had actually fired a handgun? And the majority of the students at the middle school and the high school, they all raised their hands. And it really shocked me. I wasn't expecting that at all. So during the conversation, I told them how dangerous guns were, and I feel like they should not be handling or firing guns of any nature. And also, if the parents of they had any guns in their home, then they should be secured to where the kids cannot get to them. In the news last week, I heard that a second grader, they found the gun in the second grader bag that she takes to school. And then just the other day, a seventh grader said he was gonna go in and do some killings. So I don't feel like children or kids should handle guns at all. But during this conversation, I also asked the kids, what type of activities do they have or things they do? And they told me they didn't have any. So I decided to, I wanted to take them on a trip to Montgomery to the Legacy Museum. And I didn't know how I was going to do it, but I just felt like I was. So I asked some citizens and also a council member. No one told me no. So last Wednesday, these are some of the students that went to Montgomery, and I was so fascinated because they was really involved and it was very educational. We had the principal to go and also some teachers, and it was a good thing for the kids. And I'm going to ask this council, I know that you do a lot of things to help people and groups with your discretionary funds, but I'm asking you, I'm asking these sororities, fraternities, churches and all, to help send these kids in the school system on educational trips, things that can help them. And so I have three students here today. I just want them to introduce themselves to you and say just a couple of words, and hopefully after that, we can get the number-one man in this city to take a picture with these kids, not me, but with the kids, and hopefully have some words to say.
Hello, my name is Kanal Wilson. I am twelve years old. I attend Litchfield Middle School. I am currently heading to the eighth grade, and I am a student against gun violence. It really touched me how guns are used with minors and little kids who shouldn't have the guns in the Legacy Museum. It showed me the pain and mortality that we went through as blacks and the beatings and stuff. So it really inspired me. I want to give a thanks to Mr. Cole and everyone. Thank you.
I didn't intend to say that for a minute.
You sure you didn't write the paper?
I didn't know.
That's good.
Hi, my name is Jordan Craig. I am twelve years old. I'm going to the seventh grade, I attend Litchfield Middle School, and I am against gun violence. What I liked at the field trip was that how they showed how blacks were getting traded and sold as slaves and beatings and stuff like that. And then we seen holograms of how they was crying and singing about how it happened to them and stuff. And then we seen like this wall, they had jars with dirt in it, and then the dirt represented where the slaves were beaten and died at and stuff. And I would like to thank Mr. Cole for taking us on that field trip because it was really inspiring.
Thank you.
My name is Jeffrey Al. I'm, I attend the Litchfield Middle School, and I'm going to eighth grade, and I'm a student against gun violence. And we went on this museum trip. They had art, good artwork of the stones of people when they was on the ocean, the sand, where their heads, when they had chains around their neck and stuff like that. And then also they had like the jars, he said, when they died and they digged up the dirt to remember them and put them in all jars of all the blacks on the wall. And they had a theater in there where they was showing like where they died at and a lot. And I want to thank Ms. Cole and thank y'all for letting, let us come up here and tell our story.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, you want to say something? Take a picture? Where you want them to get? Where you want, come on, come on. Ladies and gentlemen. You get in the mail, Mayor, because we want you in there. Get in the mail. They want to see the mail. Come on.
Set me on by.
Yeah.
All right. Count of three. One, two, three. One more. One, two. All right. Thank you.
I keep on saying something. Thank you. Okay.
This easy.
Thank you, Mr. Cole.
Thank you.
And just one note to, as far as the educational trips, that would be a superintendent. I know from being in the school system, they've kind of curtail that a lot of going on, of going, not going on trips, period. So that would be a conversation that you would have to have with the superintendent. And I'm sure that there are various reasons. One has to do with safety.
Correct.
But that was one thing that I was, I'm big on that, but they've curtail that a lot for students going on field trips via city.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
I mean, via schools, the school systems. Before we go to comments, Mayor and Council, I'd just like to give this announcement first. Due to the Memorial Day holiday yesterday, Monday's garbage route is being collected today, and Tuesday's route will be collected on Wednesday, and there's no change for Thursday and Friday. So we now have comments from the Mayor and Council, if there are any. Mayor, you don't have any? Any comments?
I will say one thing. All the things that is going on, it's not me, it's the people, but you got some good people in a lot of good places, and they're all like-minded, and that's when good things happen. From the highway to the schools, everything that goes on, we've got a lot of good people here who have done a lot of things, the council working together, and that's what it takes to get a lot of good things going. And thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Will.
Thank you, Madam President. I do want to take the opportunity to let those young people know how proud I am of them. Very, very good job, very, very good job on how well you presented yourself.
Absolutely.
On how well spoken you were. You stood up like little men, and you presented yourself, and I'm so proud of that. And I, and I, you know, I say this with everything I have in me, all the love I can conjure up. Don't let what you saw breed hate. Let it breed a determination in you. Something my granddaddy taught me a long time ago, a long time ago. He said, if you let that breed hate, then it's gonna overtake you and it'll create something negative. Let it breed a determination in you. We all have a responsibility. People have died so that we can be educated, so that we can be heard. And so we have a responsibility to live on that. Do y'all, y'all understand what I mean by that? Yeah, we have a responsibility. So that's why you get up every day and go to school and do as good as you can, because you have a responsibility to do it. And don't ever forget that. Don't ever forget that. You don't have to do it for me, you don't have to do it for Mr. Cole, but you should do it for those people who died for us. Does that make sense? All right. I appreciate y'all. Thank you so much. Thank you so much for what you did. And I do appreciate the moment of silence for Rob Elementary in Uvalde, Texas, and Tom's Grocery Store in Buffalo, New York. Folks, I know there's not a whole lot we can do on a local level. I had a conversation with our police chief here over the last couple of days, and he talked a lot about what, you know, what can, what can be done and some of the things that have been done in terms of how we address the whole security issue at schools. But we have a responsibility to just reach out to our elected officials, wherever they may be, state, local, state, national, or even the local level, and hold them accountable for helping to secure the safety of our children and the most vulnerable around us. So let's continue to do that. Let's, let's not allow the political climate that we're in sidetrack us from what our responsibility is in terms of our children and the most vulnerable around us. So please, continue, continue to pray. We'll continue to pray for those families. And I get it, I know we're all tired of saying, you know, let's pray and the moment of silence and all of that stuff, but you know what? I still am stupid enough to believe every word that the Bible tells me. And I'm also still dumb enough to believe that the Savior that I serve can save this nation. And so I'll continue to believe in that, and I ask that we continue to move in that direction as well. Thank you, Madam President.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes, Madam, thank you. I just want to say to the young people, thanks for going, and to Mr. Cole for even coming up with the idea to take the kids down there and let them see what our forefathers went through. So thank you. And like Councilman just said, you all represented your school and yourself and your families very well here today. So thank you. Then I want to say something to my little bonus grandbaby that's sitting out there, Miss Indy. How are you, baby? Stand up, let the people see you and wave. There you go. Pretty little cell. And it's so, just like Councilman said a minute ago, I also have spoken with the chief to make sure that we have all the tools that we need, our police department. And so heaven forbid it, something like that happened here that happened in Texas. But I'm confident that our officers are gonna go in. I know when I was there on the department, we trained the first, after Columbine, the first two officers on the scene go in on active shooter case. Now, it may be one, the first one on the scene to go in. So I'm not gonna second guess but what they did out there, but I know for me, I hope if I was ever in that situation, you know, you can train all you want to, but until that time come, you don't know what you're gonna do. But hopefully, I would go in to try to save those kids. So I want to just say thank you to our officers for what you all do every day, our first responders. And we just, whatever they need, we need to get them the tools that they need. Shields or whatever, and make sure they have, since everybody's carrying AR-15s, they need weapons. And on our force continuum, if, you know, we always step up one. But what do you step up from an AR-15? You know, if you fighting somebody with their, if they only have hand, you know, their hands, we step up to a Billy Club. Then if they got a pistol, we step up to a shotgun. What are we gonna step up to with AR-15? We are our gun. You know, unless we get a fifty caliber. Then, but see, we worry about what's behind us. With the bad guys, they doesn't, they don't worry about what's behind that target. We have to worry about what's behind that target, because we don't want to kill innocent people. So we just got to continue to pray for our country, and we have to do something. What it is, we just gonna have to work on it. But mental health is a big part of it. We got to fund mental health, not just there, but here, because we have a lot of people that needs the help. Then when it's closing down all these hospitals, it's not gonna get it. We got to, they need help. And then when they decide they won't help, just like somebody that's on drugs, when they decide they won't help, you got to get them help right then, because if you wait too long, then they'll change their mind. So hopefully, we will fund mental health in the state or start that funding mental health in this state. Thank you.
Councilman Beck.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to echo the comments on the young people that were here today, the young men that came and spoke. Very proud of you, and want to thank Joseph Cole for taking you to Montgomery to see the museum, and very important information that you have now brought back to Gaston, to your family and to your homes. Also, I want to thank the Local Patriots Association. Yesterday was the annual Memorial Day program. Our own Ben Reed is largely responsible for that. Ben, thank you very much. It was, if you could just do something about the temperature, it was a little hot up there, but.
Take your chairs from the sun and bring it to the shade.
I should have thought of that. I just sat right there in the sun. But that's, but it was a very nice program, and, you know, as we all know, that's to remember people that did not make it home. And November is the day that we honor our men and women that served in the Armed Forces, but Memorial Day is for the men and women that don't make it back home. So say a prayer for those families. I want to also thank Dr. Murphy and Ken Kirkland, Dean of Health Sciences at Gaston State Community College, for being with us today, along with David Hooks. Thank you for the information that you shared, and look forward to a very long and prosperous partnership and project with Gaston State Community College. And last but not least, school is out for summer. And so that means you're gonna probably see more children maybe riding bikes and out on our streets. I get more calls about speeders in my district than I get, well, almost more than anybody or not anybody, but anything else. Please be careful. Please don't go over the speed limit. It doesn't make that much difference if you're going a few miles over, you're not gonna get to where you're And so that means you're gonna probably see more children maybe riding bikes, uh, and out on our streets. I get more calls about speeders in my district than I get, well, almost more than anybody, or not anybody, but anything else. Please be careful, please don't go over the speed limit, it doesn't make that much difference if you're going a few miles over, you're not gonna get to where you're going any faster probably, and if you do, it's one or two minutes. So watch where you're driving, watch how you're driving, look for children that are playing in our streets all over the city. Please slow down when you're driving your automobile. Thank you very much.
Councilman Wilson?
Uh, yes, ma'am, I want to, uh, just highlight a report that we get, uh, every month up here that you guys don't necessarily see, and it's just a summary of all the permits and construction permits and whatnot in the community. And, um, this is the most significant one I've seen in quite some time. I don't know, Brian can, uh, maybe correct me if I'm wrong, but I mean, as of, in April of twenty-two, we have a total of seventeen million four hundred nine thousand dollars in construction activity going on in the city of Gadsden. That's commercial buildings and residential buildings, um, and that's really exciting. And I look at, as a small business owner, you know, you look for things that can tell you the future. And when you see those numbers going up, you know that the future's in good shape. So I think that's really exciting to see that kind of investment in our community. Uh, Dr. Murphy, thank you for letting me put you on the spot on what I know is a very tough issue, but I have the full confidence that you guys will get that figured out. The Lowhead Dam, the one thing I want to add to that, for those of y'all that don't remember, there was, uh, several deaths, as Councilman Cannon said, at that location. Um, and that was obviously tragic and led to the decision to try to push forward to get that dam removed. But I also want to add something that's certainly not as important, but equally, um, important to me, and that is the environmental impact of removing that dam. It's gonna be tremendous for our waterways, it's gonna be tremendous for some certain, there are certain types of fish in that waterway that will now be able to thrive and move freely into the Coosa River as a traditional tributary would. Um, so that's another added bonus of removing that Lowhead Dam. Other thing y'all noticed, we talk a lot about tax abatements and how the city owns all this property and real estate and everything. Uh, the two things, in case y'all didn't know, we use big words up here like conveyance. That means we sold a piece of property to a citizen of Gadsden for five hundred dollars. We actually sold two pieces of property today for five hundred dollars. So as I've said many times before, if you get on the Land Bank Authority's website and you see a piece of property and you want to develop it, you want to build a house on it, you want to do something to improve it, come to the city, and we are more than willing to work with you to get that property back in the hands of citizens. Again, with the abatements today, I want, this, this is always a really important issue for a lot of people in this community. Two of the properties that we looked at today, one of them was, is going to be abated at the request of the owner. The owner came to the city and said, will you please come tear this house down? We're not using it, we can't maintain it, we can't keep it up, we would rather you abate it. And the other one was just the remains of a foundation, so every time you see us voting on an abatement up here, that does not mean that we're going and tearing down a house. Also, to the young gentleman there, I agree with you, probably the most moving part of that museum is the, the mason jars of dirt from the lynching sites. I'm telling you, I, it can never mean as much to me as it does to you guys, but it was certainly the part that, that stopped me in my tracks, to see all that different colored dirt from all over the state of Alabama where these terrible crimes have been committed. I can't imagine what it'd be like to be a young man, uh, there, man, chokes me up just talking about it. But, uh, the only thing I'll add to the rest of these comments is just surround yourself with good people. Surround yourself with smart people. Surround yourself with people that are better than you. Um, I've been fortunate to have some success in the business world, and I can tell you that's the only reason why I am where I am, is because I surrounded myself with people who were smarter than me. Now, some of that is up for debate at the moment, but, uh, in general, surround yourself with smart people.
He's talking about the man on the left.
And one thing to Mr. Cole, I'll add, we discussed this in the Human Relations Advisory Committee meeting too, about how to have an influence on young men, uh, in this community. And while, as Council President Toll said, um, we've curtailed a lot of that traveling experience, but that doesn't mean we can't bring those experiences here through speaking, uh, programs and speaking schedules, trying to get influential men and women to come here to speak to our children if we can't take them to have those experiences as often. So that's something that I'd be happy to support also, is if we could get some sort of speaking series going where we can bring in some influential people that this community can benefit from. Thank you, that's all I have.
Councilman Cannon?
Thank you, Madam President. Councilman Wilson, uh, I'm glad you talked about, uh, older people, you know, smarter than you. I guess that's what you was referring to, because, uh, I've always, in my lifetime, figured out people that was been on this earth a lot longer than me was a lot smarter than me. So I just wanted to say that, so I know you was talking about how smart Ben was there.
Yes, sir.
Because Ben is a smart fellow. I'm gonna get to something serious now. Uh, I'm gonna run you through how a house gets condemned. I did this before, but I hear on, I hear and people say all the time, oh, the council just wants to tear down your house. We don't want to tear down your house, that's the last thing we want to do. Uh, the building department gets a complaint about a house, maybe from a neighbor next door, or from the other side, or from the other street, or a citizen. Building official goes out, he looks at the house, he determines if the house, uh, needs to be condemned. It could be the leaking roof, it could be, uh, uh, plumbing, heating, cooling, it could just be falling down. They're the ones that decide if it needs to be condemned. Okay, when he puts, or she, whichever one does it, puts a, a plaque on that, on the side, that says it's condemned, you have a hundred and twenty days to get a building per, uh, permit and start working on that house. We've had numerous houses in District Six that people's, uh, tried to move into and has died because they got burned up in those houses. Some people thinks you can just move in a house because it's empty, don't even know the owners, well, that's not true. Nobody on this council up here is, knows more than the building department. They know a house needs to be condemned, we don't go around condemning houses, that's not our job. That's the building department's job. I hear people say all the time, why don't y'all fix these houses up? Well, how can you fix up a house that doesn't belong to you? You know, that's like, how can you use city funds to fix up a house that belongs to the state of Alabama? How can you fix up a house that some heirs, their mom and dad might have died, or their aunt might have died, and they left somebody this house in, in Panama City? And they never come down here, they don't pay the taxes, and they don't want the house. You know, there's all kind of things there going on with, uh, condemned houses, and I think a lot of folks just don't understand, but, you know, if you have any questions about why we don't do stuff, call the building department. They can tell you about condemned houses and how everything works, and they'll be glad to, uh, tell you all this stuff. You know, I know we, we get complained all the time about pushing houses down. We don't want to push the houses down, but we have to. They're not kept up, they're falling in, people don't cut the grass, state of Alabama, I've never known the state of Alabama to come to guests and work on their houses. So if you want, are concerned about the houses, call the building department, they'll tell you all you need to know about them. That's all.
Councilman Reed?
I agree with you, Madam President. All the kudos I got about being so smart and intelligent down here, half the audience is gone now. It's my time to talk. Ain't nobody here. Thank you, Buster, I appreciate you, ain't it, David? Ms. Jack? Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's embarrassing.
That's really why I said that.
I know. Thank you, Kent. Uh, it was the Gadsden Edward Wacht Patriot Association that put that on the service at the fall. Kudos to Parks and Rec with the chairs, thanks to the medics for showing up, the ambulance. Everything just came together, and it was combined effort of the Gadsden Edward Wacht Patriot Association that put that on, and it was great, wasn't it? Yeah.
Hey, Ben, the mayor was complimenting the speaker as well, he said the, the speaker was really good.
Oh, hey, I'm gonna tell you, he was really outstanding, and, and you didn't have to listen too good, he put it right into you, right in your gut. Yeah. I want to thank y'all dearly. In two years, this is the first council meeting I've seen, and the people who came with a positive note. This whole meeting has been positive. Building things, helping people, so on and so forth. In two years of shadows and all the mess that's been going on, which is utterly damn ridiculous. But anyway, it happened, and thank y'all. And to people in the audience and the TV land, thank them too, because they need to know that this council and this mayor, with thirty-two projects and what they talked about this morning coming to City of Gadsden, is outstanding. Thank you, I appreciate it.
I'd just like to give a support for the American Red Cross, but also specifically, uh, for, for sickle cell, the sickle cell foundation. And I, I come saying this because the young lady that they buried Saturday from the, uh, high school, she, that was, that was one of her issues. Uh, and she was a big worker in the sickle cell foundation, and giving blood, and I'm, I'm addressing everybody, but specifically African-Americans who particularly don't like to give blood, but your blood is very much needed. It helps people with sickle cells. In fact, uh, a couple of weeks ago, I told the former Chief Crane, I said, we, we gotta stop meeting like this. Every time there's a blood drive at the mall, I give blood, and I look around, and there's Chief Crane. In fact, uh, I tried to recruit him back on the fours, but he said Chief Jagged wouldn't have him. But anyway, I just want to encourage those who, uh, give, those who can and will to give blood to support the, uh, American Red Cross, and also any foundation that's gonna be of help that's doing research to help others. Uh, if there's nothing else, I call for a motion to adjourn.